Are you all ready? Okay, this work session of the Luray Town Council will now come to order. You stand and join me for a moment of silence, please. Let's council with Vickers to lead us in our page.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Danielle, we call the roll, please.
Yes, Mayor Goffler.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Ms. Lillard.
Here.
Mr. Shiro.
Here.
Mr. Fennett.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Yeah, here.
Okay, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda? There are none, we'll move on. No public hearings, is that correct today? Okay. All right, Mr. Burke, I guess you're up. Physical year 2022 to 2023 tax rates.
Yes, sir. Counsel, at your last meeting, you had conducted the public hearing and this special meeting is set up so that counsel can consider any adjustments to the real estate tax rate, the meals and beverage tax rate, the transient occupancy tax rate, and/or the cigarette tax rate. We've provided a little bit of information. The advertised amounts were at the high level of 29 cents per hundred for the real estate, 5% for the meals and beverage, 6% for the transient occupancy, and 20 cent per pack for the cigarette tax. Counsel's requested to consider each item individually. The town attorney has reminded us that it takes a supermajority, four members of counsel, to enact all of your tax rates. And if counsel desires to keep them at the current rate, we still are required to do a vote with four votes to maintain, if that is counsel's desire.
Four votes amongst the counsel.
Amongst counsel, unfortunately, with the way that...
For both ways.
For, yes, sir. For any tax rate, for all four, we have to have a vote of at least four members of counsel tonight.
To leave them the...
To do either way.
Because we advertised and had the public hearing, you guys have to vote to either adjust them or maintain them. However, however it goes, we have to have a vote, a successful vote, for all four of those tax rates.
Hope it's not 3-3 split then, I guess. Right, is that what you're saying? Just to clarify, just so I understand.
Yes, sir.
What if it is 3-3s?
Well, it couldn't be 3-3 because they're seven, I was right.
Yeah, but the mayor doesn't...
The mayor...
The way the code is set, it has to be... Well, the mayor is the council.
Right.
Not for tax rates.
Interesting.
What was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The mayor doesn't vote for tax rates. It takes at least four council members, a supermajority.
So in the event of a tie, he still does not have a vote?
The vote doesn't matter, it fails.
For this particular instance.
For these items.
Normally, he would be your tabber. Okay.
There has to be a negotiated rate. If it's not at a higher rate than the low rate.
BZA has something like that. It has to be a majority of BZA members.
Well, no, I know you have to have a supermajority to increase the tax rate, but I didn't realize you had to have a supermajority to leave it the same.
Well, because we advertised them, that we were going to... Effectively, we have to have a successful vote on each item tonight, whether to remain or to increase.
Okay. Okay. He's got the law.
So we're gonna go through each one and just, I mean, make a motion? So we make a motion through each one?
Yes, sir, that's preferred. And then there has to be an individual roll call vote for each.
Well, I'll just take the first one. I mean, I'd sort of state at last what I'd support. So I would make a motion as advertised to set the 2022-23 real estate tax rate to 29 cents for $100 of assessed value.
I'll second it.
Counsel, any discussion? Do we have to... I guess we do have discussion.
I've got something I'd just like to share. I'm gonna try to keep the opinion out of it. I'm sure most of you all have looked at this same thing, too. Just looking around us, Rockingham County voted on April 12th, and this is the county, they lowered their real estate rate from 74 cents to 68 cents per hundred. Woodstock also voted to decrease their real estate tax rates from 16 cents to 13 cents because they had had a recent higher property assessment. As I look at other towns, and I've also looked at counties, because of course our town taxpayers also have our county tax to pay as well as town. Our board of supervisors did not raise our real estate rate this year. It left it at 73 cents per hundred. But we're Page County's at 73% per hundred. Rockingham's at 68. Shenandoah County is at 58. Loudoun, what was that at? I had something to do with them, too. Warren County is at 65.5. So a lot of the counties around us are less than our county. But then when we look at towns, there is significant difference. Broadway, Town of Broadway is 7 cents. Bridgewater is 9 cents. Dayton, 8 cents. Brado's 12 cents. This is all per hundred on real estate. The Town of Front Royal is 13 cents per hundred. The Town of Warrenton is 5 cents per hundred. Stralsburg, 16 cents. I couldn't find anything similar to Luray's rate at 29 cents unless you get into something like Fairfax. I even looked at Leesburg. Leesburg is the largest town in the state of Virginia and is located within Loudoun County, which is the wealthiest county in the United States. And Leesburg's rate for real estate per 100 is .184. So with that said, I just... And I'm sure some of you all have looked around, too. I just don't understand when we've got other counties... Now Fairfax County is a huge exception. Fairfax County real estate is $1.14 per hundred. But that county offers so many services to those towns within the county. So Hearn is from a full county police. They've got their own retirement system to pay DMS, pay fire, lots of other services that Fairfax County offers. But we compare towns to towns and counties to counties that somewhat mirror Page County and the Town of Luray. The rates are nowhere close to what we're looking to propose at 29 cents per hundred on real estate. So I just wanted to share those numbers of what's going on around us. That's all.
All right, I appreciate that, Jason. I guess, you know yourself, that there's a big difference between town and county when it comes to budget and what kind of revenues you get. From the county gets, I mean, the majority of their constitutional offices are funded by the comp board and the state. And it's a little different with the towns. Same way with some of these other areas that you mentioned. Those property tax rates are lower because the assessed values of the properties are so much higher.
I agree. And the salaries of the individuals living in those areas is so much higher. So, you know, someone that has a half a million dollar home in Loudoun County is making a comparable salary to where...
I don't know if there are any half million dollar homes in Loudoun County.
But anyway, I see what you're saying. But I guess my argument would be, and you're exactly right, yes, there is... If you would look at the generated revenue and look at the total of what Leesburg takes in at .184 in Loudoun County, yes, much higher rates. But once again, their citizens are making a much larger salary on average living there and to afford those homes. And that's where we, as the little town of Luray, I go back to this, that we have a lot of people that commute, a lot of people that don't even work here. I think I looked up some data that's been done on that, some studies. You probably noticed that, yeah. The average commute for the citizen in the Town of Luray is like 34 minutes. So if you take our total population, not everyone commutes, I realize that. Some commute longer, whatever, but it breaks down to an average of 34 minute commute. So our people are traveling to even earn a wage. At our rate, I just think, I don't want us to be the town with the caviar taste and a tuna fish budget. I mean, we've got to know what we can spend, what we can expect our citizens to pay.
No, I agree with you on that. I just think that when... But the citizens, it seems to me they're, when they come before us, they're asking for more in terms of services. And when we held the public hearing, we didn't have one person show up about the real estate tax rate. So I think...
I had a question on the meals tax, and I actually defended it somewhat as far as...
Well, we're talking real estate now.
Right, but I mean, I'm just saying, there was a tax question on that, but it was meals.
It was meals. No one mentioned the real estate. And, you know, unless... I just think for the amount of services that we're providing, when you look at some of the other communities that you mentioned, and I know some of those communities, I don't think that they have the parks and rec facilities, the greenways, the parks that we have, not to be detrimental, but I don't think they have the professional police department that we have. And I think that, I mean, I'm proud of what we've accomplished over the last, say, five, six, seven years with our services, with our parks and rec, with our public safety, with our public works and what we're doing. So, I mean, that comes at a cost. And what I hear about the increased costs for everyone, well, it's costing us more, too. I mean, we're paying additional money all the time. I hate for us to get behind the eight ball. And again, I'm not gonna be around except for half of this budget. So you guys can make your decision. But I've been in communities where they have not kept the tax rates up with the expenses, just the normal operating expenses. And, you know, it's really hard to play catch up. Particularly, I think, Luray is right on the crest of some significant growth. And if we're not, if our services aren't in line to accommodate that, and we have to pay, you know, we have to catch up with our revenues to do that, I think it's gonna be... It's difficult to do that once you're behind. And the other thing with this one, too, is that we're not... We're only taking the tax rate back to what originally, what it was a year ago.
Which is still costing us...
Which is still...
It's assessments.
Assessments, that's true. But still, the tax rate, had we been able to keep the rate at 29 a year ago, you know, we wouldn't be doing this right now. But...
Well, when I look at, I hear what you're saying. I've got to argue one point, though, when I look at what some of the amenities... Luray has a lot. I'm not short selling our town. I think we've got a lot. I'm proud of our town, all its departments, parks and rec, police, public works. Our streets look good, our sidewalks look good, and a lot of that. But when I look at Broadway, I look at Warrenton, I look at Woodstock, I look at Newmarket. They all have public pools. Warrenton has a big indoor rec pool facility. So a lot of these that I'm talking about that are 5 cents per hundred, 7 cents per hundred, Woodstock, 13 cents per hundred, these places have nice parks, they have pools, they have some amenities that we don't have in Luray. And they're all less than half of what our tax rate is.
They have a lot of commerce that we don't have as well.
The economic landscape is significantly different. And it's unfortunate because of the logistics and where we're located. And, I mean, to be frank, it's unfortunate, looking back over the last couple of years, it seems that the canyon keeps kind of kicked down the road with not increasing a penny a year so that now we find ourselves where it's a significant increase that's necessary to cover the cost of the basic operating expenses. And I would, and I hear what you're saying, and I'm really torn about this decision tonight, I'll be quite honest. I question the total operating cost for those communities in comparison, looking at our programs and the departments. You know, I think it's important, and I appreciate what Councilman Shiro just said. I do feel like that we're on the cusp here of some really potential, you know, great potential growth and good things for our community.
And with that should come some revenue.
Absolutely. So it's the chicken and the egg. Like, do we fund our departments so that we can build the capacity and the infrastructure that's necessary to attract that growth and to foster that development? Or do we wait for those to come here and then prepare and build? Does that make sense?
To me, that's where I come down on it. We are, I think, on the cusp of some good growth. If we, at least on paper, price ourselves out of being a desirable place, even if in practical terms, we're not talking about that much more money. And, you know, you've said it, and several of you have said it before. We're not talking about that much, but if you look at it on paper, if you just Google around best places to live, most affordable places to live, I mean, the higher we make those rates, it's not a good number. And I know that we can use revenue. I get it. I get it. But I would hate for us to compromise significant long-term growth for the percentage increase. Or even not increase, because it is a restoration. I understand that.
But Stephanie hit the nail on the head. These other communities, they're, they have significantly higher commercial and retail and restaurants than we do. I mean, you look at Broadway, I don't want to single out now, but some of the communities that you mentioned, I know for a fact, they don't have the level of services that we do here in amenities that we do here in the Town of Luray. But the thing, too, is that if you, when we hear complaints, too, but we don't want to see the meals tax increased, we don't want to see a TOT increased, these other communities, that's what funds Leesburg. And you've been to Leesburg, and you know what's downtown Leesburg. If you look at our budget now, the real estate tax funds 17% of the general fund. The meals and beverage tax funds about 10%.
Leesburg's 9% of transient occupancy tax. So I think people make it up in different ways.
We're making it up in different ways. Exactly right.
I don't mean to cut you off, Jerry, but also, from my perspective, I think everyone's been good points, Jason, Jerry, everyone, you know, but I just look at it as a strict arithmetic issue that we have a few things on the table here as far as some positions in our treasurer, police, parks and rec. In order to make up for the difference, you know, either we tell the departments, no, we're not gonna do it, and we keep it as it is, or we raise some additional funds. I just look at it strictly from that point of view. So anyway.
You look at that list. I think the list, my biggest issue is that it's upside down, you know, frankly. If you look at that list of the things that are priorities where you don't want to charge people more, you think of someone that has lived in a house for 30 years, paid off their mortgage, they still have this relatively large fixed costs of taxes and insurance. And then, of course, there's upkeep. So you even, you're like, ah, finally, gonna tear up that mortgage. Well, then you still have hundreds and hundreds of dollars a month you're putting out between county, city, and insurance. And to me, if we're even looking at tax increases, which you know where I stand, honestly, I mentioned the last meeting, the cigarette tax, I think we should be the same as the county. We're at 15 cents, they're at 20 cents. I'm totally fine putting that one up. But if we flip it around, really, it should come down to where people have a choice of whether they have enough expendable income to invest in these things that we're taxing on or not. A home, everyone has to have a home. And we want, frankly, more people to live here. Cigarettes, you don't have to smoke cigarettes. TOT, well, people are gonna come here, they don't have to come here. Obviously, they have expendable income, they're coming to enjoy our community. Meals and tax, you don't have to eat out. Something that's not even on here is personal property tax. Same thing, you don't have to have a $40,000 truck or car. You could be like me and have a $8,000 car in the driveway, you know, and because I don't like to spend money. So there's those things that where you have a choice in the matter versus a home. Yeah, of course, you can have a bigger home that's worth more money, but you have to have a home. And to me, if we're looking at any tax increase, I would like to go with the premise of, start with the things that people really don't need, the luxuries. Charge luxuries more than you're charging the essentials. And I don't think that's what we're currently doing. As evidenced by 17% of the budget through real estate and 10% through meals and the like. So...
Well, and 3% through TOT. And that's something that, I mean, you can argue about TOT and meals tax being passed through. And you made some good points last meeting, Jason, about, you know, the gross, you know, cost you in certain areas. There's a cost associated with it. But by and large, it's passed on to the customers. And particularly with TOT, it's the tourists that are paying that. And a lot of our amenities that we provide cater to that and cater to the restaurants. So, I mean, if we're not willing to look at increases in some of those areas, then you fall back on real estate all the time. That's what it takes to operate the town. I notice that, if you look just at the operational budget that has been recommended, not what was requested, but what was recommended, I think it went up like 10%, something like that. If you look at, on the revenue side, if you back out, if you start backing out some of the funding that we're getting from ARPA, and again, that's another thing this year you have to be careful on because the ARPA funding is kind of skewing what the actual cost is gonna be because some of the things that we would have had to fund from standard revenues this year were being able to fund through ARPA. That's not gonna be the case in years to come. So I've said enough, and I don't mean to dominate the meetings, but I just feel that I don't want to see the town get in a situation where we have to make, as Stephanie said, drastic increases.
I appreciate it, Jerry. I agree with what you're saying as well. I do want to say that I would not have taken everyone's time to share these numbers if they weren't significantly different. And I guess what I mean by that is, if some of these towns were 19 cents, 21 cents, whatever, I wouldn't even be bringing this before us. But there's a huge difference between the towns and even the counties that they're within compared to us. And I think the elephant in the room is, and I'm being the bad guy for bringing this up, I brought it up a time or two before, I think we need to closely watch our spending as a town. We love to see good things, we love to see things grow. We want all departments to do well and stuff, but there's another thing that, if you take time to look at data of what it costs us to operate some departments compared to what it's costing to operate the same departments in other jurisdictions or other counties, we're spending a lot. So I guess at the end of the day, if we don't pay close attention to our spending, we'll never have enough revenue. You know, we can raise tax rates for the next 20 years, every year, if we continue to outspend what our revenues are. And, you know, if the businesses are disappearing, if we don't really have it in retail or we don't have it in food, but we're hoping it's coming or whatever, to look to the citizens to make up that difference, you know, I think the development out here at Luray Landing, that's wonderful, I think that's gonna be a big shot in the arm, and there's the start, exactly what you're saying, Stephanie. And those things are gonna help to fuel us and help to fund us. But it's sort of the cart before the horse. We're wanting to fund and add new projects and add new things and new items that the funding's not there yet for. And I think we've been on that trend for several years. I know I'm new to this, but I've been in that audience for many, many years. And we, our wish list grows, and we like to see things, and the town looks good as a result of it. I realize that. But the funding has to be there before...
That's good, I agree with you.
That's my main...
I'm just saying that if you look at just the tax rate in a vacuum, and you don't look at everything that's going on in the community, and what services and amenities actually are provided in the community, and you're, I mean, especially when you start comparison, comparing jurisdictions as large as Leesburg and as small as Broadway.
Well, I picked smaller and larger. And Woodstock's probably our closest comparison.
Right, right.
And yes, the I-81 corridor is going through Woodstock. I get that. But, you know, when Woodstock is 13 cents and Shenandoah County is 58, that's a far cry from proposed 29 and 73.
But again, property values in those areas are a lot higher than here. They are. And...
And salaries.
To a degree, not like Northern Virginia, but to a degree. But property values in Shenandoah County and some of those towns over there are higher than they are here in Luray.
I just don't want to crush what we have here with... We've got water, sewer, and garbage rates going up. Okay, that's a given. So everyone's gonna see that, business and individuals. Now, we're looking at this, and with the other few jurisdictions, four or five of them that actually lowered rates because of the current situation that we're in with inflation, people struggling, food costs, we're struggling right now on even finding items. So I know there are restaurants in town because I see them, I just saw them this week. The stuff that we can't get from a truck, we're running to the local grocery stores to try to get, and it's first come, first served. So it is a, it's a time like I've never seen before. And I think that's what we're also looking at here, is the timing of all of this to hit with an increase. And I know as a town, we're struggling, too. But I think if everyone's suffering, we can't be flourishing and just doing great when what's around us is not. And I'm worried about what we're going into for the next six months to a year, or possibly longer, and what's gonna happen with business, what's gonna happen with travel. It's, as they say, when it comes to make a decision, is it the right thing for the right reason at the right time? And all three of those things are critical. And I think our timing right now is the biggest thing against us with what's going on both locally and nationally.
And we haven't even mentioned, I mean, let's not forget, we did get a large cash infusion as a town. It's hard for me to reconcile that in my head. I mean, I know we've put a lot of it out, I get that. We've done a lot of projects, done a lot of things, but at the end of the day, we got a lot of money as a town. And now we're needing to raise, we're needing to go up on taxes. I'm sorry, I just can't. I just can't.
And I know we advertise this and it goes in the paper. And I know we advertise this and it goes in the paper. But as you guys know, I mean, I'm in this town every day, and I'm out on the streets about every day. And when I talk with people about the proposed tax increase, what I find is, nine out of ten, if not more, we're not even aware that we're proposing to raise taxes. We didn't even know. And to get any positive response of, hey, I think that's great, or whatever, it was obviously, but people are not in touch, and they don't see that use or for, or just choose not to. I don't know. But I have talked with people that had no idea we were looking to raise real estate, meals, lodging.
I mean, I don't know about you all, but I've gotten an earful from some people personally.
Oh, when I bring it up, I get it.
Why don't they come in here and tell us?
I don't know. I know. I told people to come here tonight.
They've got some Facebook comments.
I told some people to come here tonight. You know, and I get it, everyone's busy.
Well, and it's hard for many people to stand up in front of others in this room and voice their opinion. Not everyone's comfortable with doing that. I'll be quiet. Thank you all for listening.
I will too.
All right. Anybody else? Ron, you haven't said anything. You want to weigh in before we vote?
It just seems like to have the budget that we have, we have to pay for it somehow. And I don't see anything in the budget that I'd like to get rid of. So it looks like it's what it's got to be.
All right. I think everybody spoke. Anybody else? All right. Danielle, will you call the roll vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
No.
Mr. Sowers?
No.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Lillard?
Yes.
Your next item for consideration would be the meals and beverage tax.
I'll just say this one, we did get comments on this, and I know we talked, you know, we talked about being passed through. And I was talking to the commissioner of revenue in Madison County recently, and even though it is sort of, you know, you collect it, you hold it, you pass it through, I think most of the vendors just kind of see it as money out of their pocket. So I've, like I said, I've stated, like I go, I'd be comfortable with the real estate and cigarette and leave it at that. So I won't say anymore about that one. So I would just, I'm saying that I wouldn't vote for the meals or the transient occupancy tax to say the same, so.
I was going to say one thing, we just passed to raise taxes on all of our citizens, just for future reference, when instead we could have done it where, what percentage of the people that are eating now are from Luray? It's a good, it's a good percentage, but it's far from all of them. Same with transient occupancy. Let's just keep that in mind as we're going future budgets. We just taxed all of our citizens, when instead we could have gotten half the money from outside of town.
You should have said that before.
Well, you know, that's why I said it in reverse order.
That's not what we heard before.
No, no, that's why I said it in reverse order.
I actually agree with you. If I didn't, if I thought we could, if I thought we could raise meals and TOT without hue and cry, then I would be in favor of keeping the real estate the same. But, you know, because, like I said, if you look at it, meals and beverage is only ten percent of the revenue. TOT is only three percent of the revenue. And clearly, that TOT is a pass-through to tourists.
Hundred percent, right, hundred percent.
And the thing I hear all the time, the rate just looks after the tourists, well, here's an opportunity to let the tourists pay for some of it. And, but, you know, when you hear across the board that you don't want to see anything raised, that just, that just won't work. It just won't work. So, I mean, I'm, I'm...
I think local citizens will care more about the meals tax, since most everybody eats out somewhere, and not so much transit, you know, the motel thing. So if I was going to raise one, I'd raise the TOT a lot more so than with the meals tax. But, you know, it's a percentage, you want to show what the revenue is of.
Well, I mean, with the meals tax, a percentage on a ten dollar bill would be ten cents, right? Would went up one, one percent. Ten cents on the ten dollar restaurant.
Oh, yeah, that's one cent. Yeah, that's, yeah.
All right. Anybody have any thoughts on the meals tax? Anyone want to make a motion there?
Well, I'll move that we leave the meals tax at four percent.
Second that.
Any discussion on that? Danielle, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Burke, I guess we're on the transient occupancy tax rate?
Yes, sir. For council's consideration, yes, sir.
And everybody sees the, we're currently at five percent, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And do you understand raising it to six would bring in forty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Again, I think that that's, would be an area that we should look at increasing. Again, it's only, right now, it's generating three percent of the revenue for the budget. And it's clearly, clearly pass-through to the tourists.
I personally spoke with a B and B owner. I actually brought this up back in the winter before we even had any talk or conversation about anything. He mentioned to me then that he thinks the tax rate is too low, and he's an owner of that type of business. We didn't really have any opposition here at the public area on that. But on the flip side, even with that said, going back to what I said as far as how times are right now, I don't understand, I'm not going to pretend to understand all the expenses that the B and B or, you know, owner has, the percentages that are charged by the companies, and all of that. So I don't know what all this wrapped up in that, I really don't have. But I do agree with Joey that that's the one thing we have here that's not in the pockets of locals as much as, I mean, the real estate, obviously, yeah. So anyway, for what it's worth, it's... I had an owner that said...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, I had an owner that actually said that he thinks for, and I guess he was comparing it to what his owners are, or how it does, that, hey, the town's missing out on something.
We are. And we have, we, the council has been very pro tourism and lodging in that we've approved a lot of the lodging houses, we've improved, approved a lot of B and Bs that have come before us, and with the thought that, you know, if these types of lodging are available here in town, that by creating opportunity there for taxes through the TOT, that will help stabilize the real estate taxes down the road, so.
And we are making sure, I mean, just, I think I know the answer, but on these short-term lodging, the Airbnbs and so forth, we are making sure that they are registered and paying transient occupancy taxes. I notice, you know, it's kind of common for, to go through and just look and see who's out there, and make sure that they're submitting their taxes monthly. Is that click all the top of that?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
It's something that could easily go under the radar if we don't actively watch for it.
Go through all the different platforms and make sure that...
And it's not fair to those who are paying, when those could, others could do it out, so.
So I'm not even in favor of this one. But let me ask you all this. I don't know if it's too late. What if we go back and then make a motion for real estate to go to point two eight cents? And I'll vote yes for transient occupancy. You know, you probably won't need my vote anyways. But that would effectively give you a hundred and two thousand instead of a hundred and ten thousand, or I guess a hundred and fifty if you kept both. Would you all be open to that?
There's a process to go back on that, isn't there?
Process to go back.
I mean, I, what, I mean, in terms of the Roberts rules...
Unfortunately, I'm not an expert on that. I'm just chasing the air.
I think that whoever made the motion...
It is, it's those that were involved.
I'll vote yes on cigarette, too. I'd like to see, I'll take cigarette, TOT, and a penny less on real estate. If there's a process, you know.
And again, I don't know what it is.
As I recall, it has to be the motion maker, and Webb and Councilman Shiro.
It has to be a majority.
We'd have to be willing to take it off.
So you're saying if you went back to the real estate, if I made the motion to rescind, and then we had to vote on it, and then vote on it again with that?
I don't know.
It's, yeah.
And it's, and it's, it's, we need to make sure before we do that, because...
So that would, that'd be all told with cigarette, TOT, and that lower amount, that would be a hundred and forty-seven thousand in increased tax revenue. And I just took, like, one point six seven divided, or point one six seven divided by a point two six seven, and then multiplied it by the hundred and ten thousand.
You're saying real estate, transient occupancy, and cigarettes. You're saying real estate at one cent?
One cent, real estate, and then TOT and cigarettes.
Okay.
Because again, it's giving people choices, and it's also money that we're bringing in, cigarettes, I guess not.
But you say you still won't support TOT?
No, I'm saying I will. I'll be on board. You might not, you probably don't need my vote anyways, but I'll be on, I'll say in TOT if you...
I don't, I don't know. I just think we have to be careful if we pass it.
Yeah.
Tax rate, and we haven't done it properly, and I'd really, I know there's a process to go back and...
Can we get Jason on the phone? If you all are up into it, I mean, you know, we're talking about people's paying for the year here.
Amending a pleading in relation back to original pleading.
That's what I said, I wish it was in reversal order, because then it'd be a lot easier to...
What I would recommend is for y'all to go ahead and do a vote on the next two items, and then I'll get ahold of Jason and see if he's available.
The next two, all agenda items entirely?
No, no, the TOT and the cigarette.
If the three combined, we've already passed the real estate, if the three combine are a hundred and forty-seven, if we just take the real estate where it is, leave the transient occupancy, and just add the cigarette tax, we're back at that hundred and forty, hundred and fifty-some thousand. I mean, if it's about the revenue number.
No, it's not, it's about taxing our citizens instead of importing money. I mean, that's why I'm a big fan of, like, work from home, right? Because you can import money from other municipalities, other areas where these businesses reside. Same concept. I know we're splitting hairs here a little bit, but hey.
It seems like we voted on already. I don't know why we want to go back.
I mean, you don't have to, as I'm saying. If it's, if I'm the one saying no to it, then you don't need to.
Otherwise, we just go back and forth all night. I don't want you to have.
If Steve can cancel on the phone, it would, I mean, I would entertain that conversation.
If what?
If he can get legal on the phone.
I'm not so sure that you can't, can't you, can't we adjust the rate subsequent to this meeting?
The problem is we kind of push this back part of the...
Oh, because of the tax, because of the tax billing. Right, right, right. Got you.
Typically, we, as a procedure in office, we like to get our votes out for thirty days per speaker.
I do.
If we do that, we have to change to get the votes out.
Changing a motion that has already been made and voted on comes under the class of motions called redo motions. There are three, the most commonly used method of motion to reconsider, amend something previously adopted. I think it would just very clearly state, we're going to reconsider the motion. I mean, if everyone is in agreement as a course of action, I think as long as we're, you're plain English here and say what we're doing, then it seems to me I'm looking on, this is some sort of public administration website I'm on, but it talks about a motion to reconsider. Part of the private rules, I don't know, but...
Why don't we just, why don't you withdraw your motion, I'll withdraw the second, and we go back and take a second motion? I mean, I don't know. I can't imagine anyone complaining if we're taking it down.
Right, right.
I mean, I'll tell you, I'm still not going to support it regardless, but the other votes are where they're at, so.
If I can, I would just add that if you do amend that motion for the real estate rate, it would be preferable to either change it to point two eight or point two seven, or point two six seven.
That's what I was saying. I was going to say point two eight is what I was thinking, we're just, you know.
So, point two eight is definitely preferable if you are going to change that, just in the way you're speaking.
As I recall, it's got to be rescinded by Lincoln, and then whoever did the second, then it takes a majority vote.
To rescind. Okay, so I will make a motion...
Sorry, got him.
Did the county have the same issue, Dr. Morgan changes behind you, and you go back and put it on something again? I wish it was a motion, because we've got to go with it.
And also, if you would like to amend the twenty-eight and increase the D and T...
Do you want to?
It was Councilman Webb that made a complaint, trying to, we have each of them, a motion to, or to the council, they, they, they have to, would actually, or council to, go down a cent, or what was it?
I had a handy, I had a mayor, how to be a mayor book over there or something.
Robert's Rules.
Robert's Rules, yeah, basically, how to be a mayor, that was pretty much that right.
That's cool.
And thank you all for even considering.
Okay. All right, hold on one second. Okay. What Jason has indicated is that any of the four members of council who voted in favor of the twenty-nine cent tax rate can make a motion to reconsider, and then reconsider the tax rate to twenty-eight cents, and then we would do a full vote, they're having a second to that motion by, again, one of the four. And then that's when we can take the new vote on the twenty-eight. So it's one of, it would be either Councilman Webb, Vice Mayor Shiro, Councilwoman...
Becker.
Yeah, I'll be happy to make a motion.
Lillard or Vickers, yes.
And just for sake of simplicity, you may want to handle that as two motions. One would be the motion to reconsider. If that is approved by council, then it's in essence as though the prior adoption of the new tax rate was not, actually not taken on that. And then you would ask for a new motion with respect to whatever the supported action would be for the real estate tax.
Steve, why don't you have him stay on the line till we get this straightened out?
Absolutely.
There, please, okay. You probably way ahead of me on that one.
So there would need to be a motion to reconsider by one of the four with a second, and then a full vote.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a motion.
Do you have a second?
A motion to consider the rate.
Re- reconsider.
To reconsider the rate, yes, at point twenty-eight, right.
Oh, no, just to reconsider.
Just to reconsider, okay, all right, that'll be the second.
The real estate tax.
Oh, the tax rate, yes.
So with second, it has to be somebody that...
Someone, I'll second.
Okay, all right. All right. Any discussion on that? Am I clear what we're doing? I think I am. Okay. All right. Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
No.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Okay. So now, we're back to item A, the real estate tax rate. We're going to just start that over again? All right. Did I hear a motion there?
I make a motion to adopt twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year real estate tax rate at twenty-eight cents per a hundred dollars of assessed value.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any more discussion? Right, it's been moved in second. Any, any more discussion? Make none, Danielle, we do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
No.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're down to, we've done the meals, but I could do any of the meals and beverage tax rates. So now we're down to the transit occupancy tax rate, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I hear a motion to change that.
I'll move that we, um, adopt the transit occupancy tax rate for, uh, ordinance twenty dash, twenty-two dash oh two, to set the transit occupancy, occupancy tax rate at six percent for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second.
Discussion. Yes. Since we've learned what has been the figures that we have, is there will be less money in the budget or is this, how's this work out with dollars?
The budget was presented with all the current rates.
Not the increases.
Not the increases.
Correct.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Danielle, call the roll, please, some vote.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, finally, we're at the cigarette tax rate. The proposal is, or the, I guess it is, raise it five cents a pack? Anybody want to make that mention?
Does that match the county of twenty cents a pack?
Uh, good question, Ron.
Yes.
Yeah, it does.
Don't, don't we do, Danielle, that one per, one cent discount?
We do offer the ones, the one cent discount, um, and I did ask Mr. Watkins about that, if we still have to offer that, and it is written into our code, so we continue to offer the one cent discount as a convenience for the vendor for fixing the stamp. So we would, um, would have to still offer that.
So, so it would be nineteen?
Essentially, yes.
So you're going to make it twenty-one?
Well, we can't go any higher because we're the average.
That's why we only have highs or twentys.
But the county's is twenty cents as well, and I did talk with, um, Shenandoah, theirs is twenty cents also. So it seems like we're the only ones still at fifteen cents.
And we are asking them to actually physically do something beyond just collecting tax and paying that sense.
E- even with the one cent discount, that is the forty-five thousand of revenue. Is that right? Okay, anyone?
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, even with the one cent discount, it is.
I believe so. I would have to check for you tomorrow, but I believe so.
I would think so.
Okay, any more discussion? Are we ready to vote? Danielle, will you call the roll call vote, please?
I don't think you had, I don't think you had a motion.
Oh, I thought we had a motion. Hold on, Danielle.
I move the town council adopt the cigarette tax rate ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-two dash oh three to set the cigarette tax rate at twenty cents per pack for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Now, Danielle.
All right. Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
So what is that range?
Well, I mean, in theory, it's maybe a hundred and eighty. Forty-five per nickel.
That's the, that's the adjusted real estate. Oh, wait, what do you ask? Oh, you're on the, no, no, sorry. Okay, thank you, Jason, appreciate it.
Sure thing, you have a good evening.
Okay, thanks. Goodbye. Okay, based on my rough estimates of forty thousand dollars for the transient additional resi, additional revenue from transient occupancy, forty-five thousand for, from cigarette tax and sixty-two thousand from real estate. You have an additional one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, um, from which to proceed to your discussion on additional items for the general fund. Which is item two.
I would like to see us do a cost of living increase of two percent for our employees.
I have a COLA. The one new position for treasurer to upgrade. And.
Mr. Mayor, if, if we could have a vote on each of the additional items.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when you say each additional, when you say COLA, you want it lumped in between general fund staff, water and sewer?
Well, primarily, the, 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 the general fund is where the additional monies were truly needed. The water and sewer, we believe that.
Oh, they're kind of self-funding?
With, at the two percent, we believe that we can accommodate that within their, their funds.
Yeah, that's good to know.
So what's the total COLA going to be to the?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand.
And is that, um, inclusive of increases to FICA and V R S?
Yes, sir.
That's inclusive of all those impacts?
Did you make a motion, Mr. Ray?
I didn't make a motion, no, but I will.
Okay, sorry.
I move that we provide a cost of living increase of two percent to the town employees.
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, Danielle, you're very busy tonight.
I know.
I keep going, you're doing great.
Thank you. Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I was going to, I know one position, um, and it, I mean, I'm really kind of looking at staff, uh, just seems to be the most pressing was one position, the treasurer's office, which is an upgrade from a part-time position to a full-time position that, that estimated at twenty-nine thousand dollars annual.
That's correct.
Right, so should I just make a motion on that or, okay, so I'll just make a motion that we include the treasurer position, uh, increase of twenty-nine thousand dollars, uh, into the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year budget.
So you, this is, is a part-time position that would be?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to explain that.
Yeah, please.
So currently, um, in our staff, we have two full-time ladies in the front office and a part-time administrative assistant position, which is shared between assisting in the front office and assisting myself, um, Danielle, um, our assistant town manager and town manager. So that person does, um, share a lot of roles. Um, one thing that we did, um, realize, especially during COVID, um, and, and I realize hopefully we're coming out of that situation, but, um, at one point, our staff was down to two people during, during time of sickness. Um, so it's very difficult to, um, have such a small staff and still provide a level of service. In addition to that, um, our staff does continue to take on many, many projects, um, even like we were just talking about lodging tax. We have many lodging owners. We are dealing with our new, um, intermediary, um, companies that are providing that tax. We're constantly looking at new and different things. We're definitely being more aggressive in, um, pursuing delinquent real estate, pursuing delinquent meals and lodging taxes. So I feel like my staff has definitely, um, gone above and beyond as much as possible, um, even with this position being part-time. With that being said, um, recruiting a part-time position is very difficult. We have been incredibly blessed to have someone come on staff who is, um, who has a great background in H R and payroll. Um, they've proved very, very helpful, um, and they were willing to come into an administrative assistant position. It would be really nice to upgrade that just to be able to allow, um, more coverage in the front office, more assistance to myself and Steve, um, not, not trying to sell us here, but, um, it, it would be very helpful, um, for a lot of reasons. We're very fortunate that one of our employees is an insurance waiver, so we've saved about ten thousand dollars there. So that's why we're only requesting twenty-nine thousand in order to upgrade. That position at part-time is at about twenty-five to twenty-six thousand dollars a year in, in part-time salary, um, which with benefits, we would be fully burdened at around fifty-five. So I feel like it's a huge value for the money, um, and definitely a huge asset to my staff, so, so we are requesting that. Sorry.
No, no, thank you, no. No, it's, that's, that's very helpful. I just, I didn't understand if it was, we're talking about one person that's going to go from a part-time.
One person that would transition from part-time to full-time. Of course, that wouldn't be effective until July, um, but yeah, it would be extremely helpful to my staff.
I'll, uh, I'll second, uh, Legan's motion.
Any discussion?
Uh, just, uh, I, I think I'm on board with this one. That seems like a good decision. But I think as we're going down through the rest of the list, maybe we need to step back and, and actually know what we're looking at before we spend all the money. Those are going to run out pretty quickly.
We got much left.
So we're at, uh, after this, we'll be at eighty thousand after this.
You said, is that thirty-eight plus?
Eighty left. Thirty-eight plus twenty-nine is, yeah, seven, uh, sixty-seven.
So there's eighty left.
We have about eighty left, right?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, yeah.
Any more discussion on that?
And I just know we, we've talked about it and, you know, think about what the ARPA money, uh, and I know just for me personally, it's, I've talked to Danielle about it for quite a while, this position, uh, and the need for it. And I, like she said, I think they have someone in the office that's got good experience, uh, that can step right in and do a good job. Uh, because I know one time we talked about, you know, outsourcing and all this with.
Right.
This kind of takes care, take care of that and, uh, so that's sort of why I thought it was important.
So, on that note, are we using some of the ARPA money? Because I see it's not highlighted green. Are we going to use some of the ARPA money for that? We can't for the position?
Not, not for the position.
Even if it's, because you can't, okay, yeah, yeah.
But essentially, to, um, Joey, we have not used any of that money to outsource, um, the record keeping or, I know Steve spends a ton of time, um, on the webinars and, you know, we are spending a lot of time on that, so we've actually saved a good bit by not outsourcing that to this point.
Yeah, it's all the same at the end anyways.
So there is a little bit of savings there.
It's all the same, whether it's coming from one part or the other, I guess. Cool.
But we can attest that the treasury website is a miserable website to navigate.
Of course.
I figured it'd be easy and supple.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this, don't we?
Yes.
All right, any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the, the remaining items, uh, the safety program, uh, was unfunded about eight thousand dollars. Uh, we believe that the, the request had been based on a continuation of COVID. So I don't know that it's necessarily a high priority. Uh, the additional patrol officer, the chief can speak to, uh, the benefits of that position. Uh, within public works, we were not able to fund the audible pedestrian signal equipment. Uh, we weren't able to, uh, fund the East Main Street street light upgrade, the Nichols Road Phase Two extension, or an incentive program for the maintenance workers.
Steve, what is that?
Effectively, uh, what, you, you'll see that item both in public works and in the Parks and Rec. Right now, a, a number of our maintenance workers who do the majority of the work to maintain the streets, to maintain the, the town properties, um. Effectively, you come in as a maintenance worker and you can work in that position for ten or fifteen years. The only upward mobility that we have in those departments would be to become a crew leader, uh, or an equipment operator and, or move on to being the assistant superintendent or a superintendent. So there's basically four levels above there. What we would like to be able to do within both of those departments would be to establish criteria for a maintenance worker two, a maintenance worker three position, so that after you've got some time, after you've got experience and you've got the ability to operate more equipment at a, at a, at a, where you can demonstrate a greater understanding of that equipment, we would be able to say, you qualify to become a maintenance worker two. You qualify to become a maintenance worker three, so that there is some career development within those positions as well as it would offer our employees, um, both greater job satisfaction, knowing that they are working towards, um, that next level.
Thanks for asking that, Ron. I was wondering the same thing. Steve, is, is that department that has like our highest turnover right now, is that correct?
Within our public works department, yes, sir. Uh, typically what will, and thankfully, uh, I hate to say it, but a, a number of the folks that have left public works actually have moved on to other departments, um, both our, our, our wastewater plants and, and within Parks and Rec, but a number of them have gone on to other, other localities, unfortunately.
Well, and I noticed looking at, at the budget proposal, uh, that we were given here a couple of months ago, if you go through that on all departments, one thing that I found shocking, I was going to bring this up tonight, too, public works and their proposed budget here for twenty-two, twenty-three, they've actually got four lines of reductions that I don't see in other departments' budgets. Their, uh, salaries, overtime, repair parts, and electricity are all lower than what they were before. They've also got two other reductions in capital, which no one else had, which is in machinery and equipment and vehicles. If you look deeper, their twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget, the current proposed budget is eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars less than the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget. It's the only department we have here in the town that looks like it's going backwards as far as funding. And they're still getting the job done, and I know that asphalt, gravel, cold patch, pipe, uh, all this stuff's gone up. I don't know how they're doing it. And, um, but anyway, that's, that's one thing here that really stood out looking through that, and when you even look at them over the years, you have to take the Main Street bridge out of that on the capital stuff. It gets skewed a little bit when you look at the bridge replacement. But if you, if you remove the bridge replacement, which is a lot of view of funds anyway, and just look at our public works, it's been a pretty flat budget and actually taken some steps back here in the last two years from what they're typically funded. And when I was hearing some stuff with turnover, uh, I think it's critical we take care of them, too. They're not a squeaky wheel, I guess is what I'm saying. You, since I've been here, you don't see them ask for much, but they still get the job done, but they shouldn't be forgotten either.
Agreed. If, if we had some way of, of giving, uh, and again, th- these are the folks that get the work done. They're out in, in the field every day.
Every day of the week, somebody's out there picking up trash.
And with respect to public works, those are the guys that are repairing the, the water lines in the middle of winter.
When it's ten degrees.
Those are the guys that are clearing sewer blockages, um, at the jail.
Yeah. Yeah, you see them anytime. So Steve, just to make sure, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, I'm sorry if I misunderstood, so.
It's twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand, right?
Twenty.
Twenty-five for public works, twenty for parks.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at parks. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It would be distributed to those workers in, in some fashion during the year?
Yes, sir. What, what we would do, i- if you approved it, we would come back later in the year after both Jennifer and Lynn have had the, the opportunity to develop what the criteria would be. We would come back to y'all to say, this is what we want to do for our employees. Basically, if you're, um, able to achieve a C D L that has a, a, you get a Class A with, with, um, a hazmat so that you can, um, drive any vehicle that we had, you know, that would be a, a good criteria. Yes, sir, we want to come back and, and present.
Show something. I, well, I, I mean, it's, I, I agree.
And then within public, uh, parks and recreation, Jennifer's requested two additional, um, positions. We also were not able to, to include funding for the Dean Park parking lot improvements and the underdrain project, again, that incentive program, and then finally, the other items that were not included in the budget, uh, East Main Street Dry Run Bridge preliminary engineering study, uh, construction reserves, uh, the maintenance, the bridge maintenance package, which is basically paying for the, uh, East Main Street Dry Run Bridge, and then the request from Lowry Downtown Initiative for an additional ten thousand dollars.
What, what was that additional ten for, Steve?
I believe that it was some of their programming costs as well as to provide funding for, um.
Benefits.
Yes, benefits for the, for the, for the director, yes, sir. Miss man?
I think for retention of a executive director for our downtown program, if that's something we want to invest in and see value in, I mean, I understand, I believe that is a part-time position. What is the salary, like thirty thousand for that position? It's very minimal for an executive director position for a main street program compared to other Virginia main street programs that I'm familiar with. For an executive director position for a Main Street program compared to other Virginia Main Street programs that I'm familiar with. I would, I, I think that that could be something that would be appropriate to consider, to provide insurance for that position.
So would that insurance be through the town?
No, sir. They're, they've, they, they, they had a quote from an independent provider.
I'm sure with LD and B, and they provided a.
Okay. No, the only reason I ask is because we can't provide insurance for that.
No, this was just funding for them to seek outside benefit package.
I'd like, a good point. Um, if we're looking at everything overall before we, I'd like to hear comments from the chief on the, for the additional officers' position.
Like I said previously before, China added patrol search each shift. I was able to work bronze position part-time. And just add, add to that to convert that position full-time, and then one additional full-time to that shift. So you don't have to know that from now, but you have six and seven thousand. Which we reduce our, our part-time budget. Let's say thirty grand already. So that was the offset, an offset of having these part-time. With the construction, housing, what's going in, cost of service since two thousand fifteen, it started twenty-three hundred, right around forty-five hundred now. Also service over the past three, four years.
And do I, do I remember that you said that, um, you don't have two officers on?
This is, you know, cover the two officers. So try to make day two officers on the shift all night, so I don't have to.
Did we catch that though with this new full-time? That the part-time lines were taken from, didn't that other position?
Just one shift.
Okay, I thought adding another full-time covered that gap.
Two. I'd asked for two originally.
Yeah, but didn't, right, but when we, but didn't the one make that difference of having that void where there was just that one guy during those early morning hours?
No, because it's two different shifts. We have a one shift that covers the void, but not the other shift.
Okay.
Uh, one guy can't work seven days a week.
Okay, right, right, I got that. But I mean, I thought you were restructuring some of your, like, daylight numbers or whatever toward this stuff.
No, we're trying to adjust the hours, yes.
Where sometimes we've got like five guys and one.
The one shift, the one position before that.
So your midnight person basically is?
Well, from three to six.
Three to six.
By himself.
But, I mean, I would, I would like to see us fund the additional officer if we can, but it's not enough money to go around for everything, I understand. Well, I would like to see that too. And let me ask this, Chief, if, as I look at the budget, is there some savings or some trimmings or something that could be done there to move into?
We gotta get hard with the cameras this year. The hundred twenty thousand increase in radios, hopefully we get.
Well, let me ask you, I, I look at like police supplies and range.
Yes.
Okay, it's fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars. Okay. Is there any savings?
It's just the, the cost of everything's going up. I cannot trim my budget anymore. Um, we, me and Mike sat down, we trimmed off, cut officers' hours part-time.
Because I mean, I just, I did the math in my head on thirteen officers to qualify, the cost of ammo today, sixty-round MDA cores. It's, it's not that much money to do the annual qual- qualifications. So, even though ammo's high. But I didn't know what other expenses you, and I mean, we've got a range that already exists.
Fires, and initial fires, which we got, we bought five, what we did, we get a donation, um,
Okay.
we're, we're spending what we got. We're not spending one way of getting extra.
What is ten thousand in asset forfeiture? What's asset forfeiture cost? Why that's, why is that ten thousand? That's, I mean, asset forfeiture should be a revenue. It's in a cost item, it's ten thousand.
If he has that in his revenues, he has to put it in expenses to offset the revenue.
Revenue to what now?
If he's gonna get the ten thousand dollars in his revenues, we require him to put the ten thousand in expenses to offset that.
And I may not get it, but I have to put it in my.
So if he doesn't get it on the revenue side, he will.
That's in our grant totals here, as if we're funding it.
Yep. It looks that way, but it's not.
Well, I mean, it's, it's in an expenditure line. It's not a revenue line. But it's a pass.
He's saying it's also, she's saying it's also one of, it's in a general, it's in a general revenue.
It's just, it's like a grant, or like a grant, you have to budget for it, I mean, on the revenue side, and you have to budget for it on the expenditure side.
Because you have to spend the money presumably.
But if it doesn't come to fruition, then, if it doesn't, if the revenues don't come in the expenditure stuff.
Yeah, we don't realize it, then we don't, I mean, yeah, right.
Okay. So like on the grant side of things? Like, yes, it's more akin to a grant. All right, I got you. Okay, so you're saying, you can't, if we were a little shy on that extra position, you can't find any other money within that budget to?
No.
Okay. I just. So if we did, um, if we did the, the police position and we did the public works incentive, we're looking at eighty-nine thousand, right, which would? I struggled with, public works is eighty-one thousand, seven eighty-two less than it was in nineteen twenty. And our police budget is two hundred ninety-three thousand, three seventy-two more than it was.
I was gonna let it slide, Jerry. Oh, you said like, uh, twenty twenty, you said nineteen twenty.
I had an arctic position.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So how are we, how are we?
Oh, nineteen.
We had an arctic position.
Okay.
We gave the raises.
Well, I've got those numbers, but I mean, I've got.
Hundred twenty thousand radios.
Okay.
We had, the cameras were eighty-one, which you cover with ARPA.
Yeah.
So, there's no.
I mean, it's just under three hundred thousand. I don't know whether we can get another position in there. Because a lot of that money, I, a lot of that, that's what I was saying, this ARPA money is skewing. A lot of those things that are bumping the budget up are capital items that ARPA's covering, correct? No, no, not all. Not all, but some. No, right. Because many of these are continuing items, or even starting before ARPA funds, if we go back five years. Yeah. I'm talking about, you referenced the? Oh, the nineteen, twenty twenty. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Right. But yeah, I mean, we're even, well, I don't know, thirty-two percent in five years. That we all be able to get. I would think we'd find money on those positions. That's ours. It's, because I'd like to see it too. I would vote. I mean, I'd like to see that first, that added version, but somehow. So we're talking about, if we wanted to do, and I'm just talking, not making motions. If we want to, uh, if we wanted to take care of public works, when I agree, we should. Yeah, that's forgotten. And we wanted to create this position, basically we need to come up with nine thousand dollars somewhere. And, um, if we just brought the position in, in August, or Sept- or September, or August, probably would do it, instead of July one. You got it.
Plus then you just put, kicking it to next year a little bit, but, you know.
You know, that's.
I know, that's practically.
Well, again, if you were looking to do the funding of the incentive programs for both public works and Parks and Rec and, and the, uh, LDI, that would be about fifty-five thousand, so, um, if, if you were looking to bring that officer on at, at, at January one, then I think we could make that happen.
I sure like the idea of doing the incentive for both departments.
I do too.
I'll leave now, Parks and Rec. And I'd cause all kinds of anguish with employees.
I mean, with the conversation we have with, I'm sorry, Jason.
No, no, I agree with you.
With, with Jen in here, and I've had some sidebar with her and understanding the needs that she has in her department and opportunities to encourage advancement, if you will, with some of her staff. I, I do feel like that this incentive program would be, um, appreciated, and I do feel like there is a need. Just, just considering the, the conversation with, with what we're looking at up at the lake. And the challenges that that's presented this past year, and I, I don't, I don't foresee that going away.
Yeah, we're not adding another position for that, so it, it seems like the least we could do is add some sort of a, I'm sorry about Parks and Rec, we're not adding a position. And the, and the wastewater, now this budget does include, this is not public works, but it does include one position. The existing budget does include one new position down at the wastewater treatment plant.
An upgrade from part-time to full-time.
Yes.
It also includes an additional position at the water plant.
So, so help me understand, so the incentive programs, will they effectively be raises for a good number of staff, considering they're all in one fiscal year's budget?
Potentially, yes, sir. Um, it's.
So that's something to consider, like, is that?
Qualifications.
Yes.
Yes.
If that's.
But again, they won't happen.
If that's right, that's right.
It won't all happen July one.
No, sir. Uh, again, we have to develop programs.
Unless it will, right, unless it does.
I wonder if we can develop something that, that, those employees, uh, because I think Jason's right, they do get kind of, they don't ask for it a lot, so we sometimes, I think it would be nice if we do create a program that they can, that they actually can receive the benefits over the course of the year, and that, that fund, it's a one-time allocation that, you know, a year from now, we could say, hey, look, this is how it's been spent. Of course, we're gonna say, we'll, we'll talk about it, but I would be in favor of those two and the LDI. Um, and on the police, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a tough call for me, because I know we've tried to, in the past, with bringing the salaries up, uh, and I felt that was important, and, um, I'm, I'm happy we've done that. But, um, you know, I, I think what Jason says has, has some merit, and, um, I do think it's important that we, we are careful how we move forward, uh, recognizing that maybe we come back in a year, and if, if this is still an issue, we, we need more coverage, then we can just, we can discuss it then, but, I mean, unless you want to go back and change tax rates, and move it up.
You know how to do it now, yes.
There's, there's just, not everything can happen. Um, and so, that's just sort of where I am. And it's, it's no, in any way, uh, I think the police, you guys do a wonderful job, and, and, uh, I, I hope that if you do have lack of coverage, I hope that maybe it's just a narrow time that we can, uh, we can manage for another budget cycle.
But one more question. Don't mean to beat you up or put you on the spot. Just trying to find money for that position. Travel and training, that's something jumped out at me. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, seven thousand, seven hundred dollars was spent. In twenty twenty-one, sixty-three hundred was spent. But you budgeted fifteen thousand in this budget.
Right.
Is there any, I mean, that's not, that's not your academy fees.
Yes.
Okay, well, they didn't go up.
Right.
In the last couple of years, so that's more than doubled.
I, I can answer all your questions. If you, I can't right now, I wasn't prepared for this. I can answer every one of your questions right now.
Okay, all right. I'm trying to find some money within your budget.
As trained as possible, but me and Mike trimmed that budget down to get to try to get to two officers this year, the lowest we could get, without going into red.
And that's the only other line I'm, I see that's, that's more than doubled just last year, and I'm wondering why that travel.
That's nothing, nothing other than something have been unusual, or something's missing out of there, I don't know. Or something's taken different from a subscription of something, of some type of training. I don't know.
Yeah, because membership dues and subscriptions, that's a separate line.
That's the academy dues, yes.
That's thirty-one five. That's where your academy fees and all is coming out. This is just travel.
Right.
And train. So, okay, all right. Trying to find money, that's why I'm asking, okay.
So from, uh, staff's standpoint, are there any hot priority ones that just didn't make the cut?
Um, if we can just circle back to the incentive for Parks and Rec and public works, I did just want to add that, and I've always advocated for this, those two departments are our most, um, undervalued departments, I believe. Um, they have our lowest-tiered employees in terms of salary. A lot of those folks are also paying for dual or family health insurance. Um, so that's something we really need to keep in mind. Um, a lot of times, the reason that they have stayed and been loyal to the town is certainly not because of the pay that they take home. It's because of the benefits, it's because they're happy and they have been loyal employees. I feel like these two items are ways that we can continue to keep them. We've always said that we have some of the best employees, but we have some who are looking at other localities or are looking at different VRS-paid positions. In my time here, we have had very little turnover in public works, but lately, we have seen a lot more turnover. We have young folks who, um, have aspirations to go do other things. Some of them are taking hazardous duty positions. And they're willing to move on to another, they get a foundation here, they move on to another VRS-paid position that, um, you know, affords them more time with their family and better benefits and, you know, time off, or, and when I say better benefits, I mean hazard du- hazardous duty and things of that nature. So, um, I think it's really important that we try to keep those folks. Right now, um, I just looked at this the other day. We only have seven employees in those two departments that have a CDL license. We have three currently with a learner's permit. If we look at the current incentive pay to obtain a CDL, there's no way that I would even bother. It's, it's a few hundred dollars, um, and that really makes not much difference in terms of salary or VRS salary. So I think it's important that we consider something. I don't know if we have, you know, I don't know if there's any way that we can, um, we certainly can't do one department without the other. We have to find some equitability between the two. I would think it would, would be unfair to say, okay, we're gonna do an incentive program for public works, but not Parks and Rec, because they both are, um, very low in terms of salary tier, so. And those are the folks we depend on, like you said, we depend on them at the lake, um, for all those services. And also, like we said, um, you know, if you don't have water and it's ten degrees, we depend on them for that, so. It is a nice way to, to go about encouraging them to develop in their career, so. Definitely, Joey, I think it was you or Ligon that asked, it would be tied to a certification.
The, the intent is to try and, again, provide incentives and, and provide, um, long, a career path.
Yeah, absolutely.
For, for our, our employees, yes.
Right, but I just don't want to make it so difficult that nobody takes advantage of it. I mean, like, that, you know, I think like Daniel said, we agree that they are some of the lower-paid employees and maybe a little bit forgotten. And I, I don't want to, I just wouldn't create a program that is so, there's so many barriers that they can't enjoy the fact that we budget this money one time, and it really gets bored them. I know they get paid overtime, they book overtime, but if it's, can be structured in a way where they can take, take advantage of it, uh, without having to, you know, pass the bar example.
Right, right, sir.
Yeah.
With the, um, talking public works and Parks and Rec, I, I would like to see a, a lot, a little more receptive attitude from Parks and Rec to implement some of these user fees. I mean, I think that's a way that we could generate some additional money, that we could maybe, um, look at some incentive programs like this, but I didn't, I didn't get the feeling that there was a lot of, um, support from the staff on creating some of these user fees.
Well, uh, in, in your, in, in the proposed rates, uh, there is an increase in the reservation of shelters. There's a, a separate fee, an in-town, in-county fee, and then out-of-county fee, so.
And is that gonna be implemented?
If council adopts it, it is part of your proposed budget, um, that there are, there would be.
I mean, I just heard a lot of problems about implementing that, that's.
Well, that, that is not so, the, the, there is concern about a, a, an entrance fee and, and being able to provide staffing for that. But the reservation fee, when ever anyone calls in to reserve a shelter, um, our staff will ask them, you know, you know, for their contact information. If they are not a, a, a town-county resident, they will be advised that there is a, an out-of-town user rental rate, and that is in your, your proposed budget.
I'd still like to see town, because county doesn't pay for it. So, like, I, I love my county brothers too, but I mean, they don't pay for it.
If that is council's desire, uh, again, it is your budget now, so that is one of the options that you have, would be to modify that, that to just an in-town rate versus an in-town, in-county rate.
I agree with, I agree with you on that. I'm okay with it being county, but.
That's, that's fine. Come on in, they can move in and pay town taxes and get the, get the discount too.
Here, meal stacks.
That's true, they do pay for some of the meal stacks. Uh, so, what are, what are other points on here, like, things that are priorities for staff? Because I mean, there's always some real good stuff that don't make the cut.
Well, I, I, actually, these were all of the, the unfunded requests that had come in, that, from, from staff.
Well, I, I know, but as far as like priority-wise, because we're over.
Oh, uh, again, I think, as Daniel indicated, priority, at least in my mind, would be the incentive programs for both public works and Parks and Rec. Trying to, to provide LDI, the appropriate funding to, to maintain that as a viable organization. The upgrade of, of, uh, the treasurer's position and the COLA were definitely the, the major items.
Okay, so things like replacement of valves and the. Okay, so things like replacement of valves and meters, is that, is going to be, so I know water and sewer is a little different, but for COLA, but it's not going to be for a lot of these cap, capital investments, right?
Some of those, we weren't able to fully fund. I think there's, in, in, as far as the, the valves, there is funding in, in the, the water and sewer budget for that. It's just not to the, the level that they had requested.
Because the nice thing about those is we actually get some money back on them too, so it's.
So, but if we do the incentive, we have 81K left of what we've, you know, what's, we have here. We've got 55K spent, so that leaves, you know, what, 30, 36K? And Bo, you said, my question understood, there, there is one part-time position that has been, that recently has been upgraded?
Yeah, I had, you know, two positions each.
Okay, so you.
I took Ron's position.
Right.
Forty thousand from that and converted it to forty-four thousand, converted it, added salaries and benefits to one full-time. Russell's position down to thirty thousand to 10,000. So I took 60,000 out of my part-time budget to convert to a full-time.
So we do have one additional, at least.
Well, it's not additional, this is basically a position.
To part times.
Of part-time. Ron was four days a week, so.
But you've got an extra full-time position. That's what we voted on a couple of months ago.
Oh, yes, I have, yes, extra full-time. Converted the Ron four days a week to a full-time position.
Let's still look at that.
So you, you had a, you had a part-time position that you converted to a full-time position?
Yes, I had a part-time investigator position.
But so you, but you don't, you don't have an additional full-time person, right?
Correct.
Which is what you're asking for.
It's what you're asking for.
Yes.
So you're asking.
Well, yeah, I mean, because Ron was part-time, I converted his to full-time, so.
So I mean, someone took that spot, you know, we hired in that full-time position. That's where Jay Roy came in.
Yes.
That was Ron's old part-time spot?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, no, I, I took that money to, to Jay Roy's position.
So I'm saying, you had a part-time position that you converted to a full-time position?
Right, right.
Well, from an investigator, the patrol.
We didn't get a new.
Lost investigator position, so to speak.
Lost the investigator position.
Yeah, but we didn't get a new full-time position though.
Four days a week, though, is that?
But that's where I was thinking that that position was going to make up the difference on the coverage. But staying, staying, we're still short on the coverage, so.
Well, if we go with what we have here, what we, we'd have 36K left. I mean, maybe we just leave it at that. We don't have to spend it all with the increase. We could just.
But if you add in the LDI, that takes it to 26.
Thirty, yeah, 25, 551 is what I have.
Okay, that's what I would recommend, yeah. That, I, I did mean to add in the LDI, right.
I'm sorry, so what is that now?
So what are we doing?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a bit confused.
If, if council desires to add in incentive programs for Public Works and Parks and Rec, that would leave about $36,000 left. If you look to add in funding for LDI, that would drop you to 26,000. You don't have to fully allocate everything. We would just put that in as a, the name escapes me, but basically just a general fund recovery or general fund.
Reserves.
Reserve, thank you. So you, you don't have to fully allocate everything.
So if we go down the list, we, we've got the COLA, which is 38,000.
Just for the general fund, it's 58 altogether.
Fifty-eight altogether.
Well, wait, but we're saying that that's already.
Yes, the general.
That's not going to affect our.
It's already budgeted.
It's already budgeted.
The, the utility side's already budgeted.
So it's 38?
Yes, 38.
Two, 38.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, 300.
And 29 for the new position, the treasurer. And then we have the.
Twenty-five.
Twenty and 25.
Twenty and 25 for the incentive programs. Then we're going to add the new, add insurance to LDI.
That'd be 10.
10, so what does that leave us at there?
26.
Twenty-five, five, 26, whatever.
That's still left over. I'd say we just call it a day at that.
What are the valves and meters? What is the, what is it? Just, he felt like he needed a little more funding for it?
We, we had increased it, yes, sir. And the, the, the good news is, is that with the realized connection fees, that does afford the water fund specifically. That's money truly hasn't been allocated yet. So if, if we do go over with some of those operations, there is funding there through the, the connection fees.
But that's the, that's in order to offset our, our capital investment, is how we were rationalizing it in our minds, right?
Yes, sir.
It's unallocated, but at the same time, we, right?
Well, any.
So you're saying we don't need to allocate? It wouldn't be any sense in allocating 2,500 of that, is what you're saying?
Well.
Is that fair?
Of, of, of your, your general fund, it, it, we.
You don't, you generally don't give that anyways, because that's the same, but I understand, but.
But, and to be honest with you, that, that amount, I think, we'll be able to, to, to work within the, the existing budget. Now, if you were to come back and say, no, we really want to do the Reservoir Avenue main extension, that would be a discussion of 150,000.
Sure. That's getting into your CIP and all that, okay.
So Mayor, we've had a vote on the COLA and the upgrade for the part-time position. Is that correct? We've already voted on those two items?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can I ask one more thing? I'm still bothered about that position.
I am too.
That you need.
Just, just, because I was breaking down the paper folder. My budget, my training budget's 5,000 less than I came here from 2015. I don't know what numbers you're reading, but they've been the same for the last years.
Last year.
My training budget?
Travel and training.
Travel and training.
Travel and training.
15,000 or 80,000?
Well, see, what they give us here is all that ending.
Yeah, see, I don't think you're, we haven't changed that five years.
Okay, well, what I'm getting at is 7,700 in 1920.
Sixty-seven.
2019, 2020, 6,354. This is what you spent?
No, that's, I don't know how that, I don't, I have to look that.
We'll get together, look, where I'm going with this, where I'm going with this.
Yeah, because I don't get the expenditure. All I know is I'm saying it's a zero amount. I don't know that, I don't, I don't see what you're seeing as far as, we haven't changed that.
I mean, this is, right, this is what was actually spent out of that line item. And then also see the overages that are spent on line items. So some departments are overspent and then money's taken from another line item to compensate what was overspent.
I don't get, I don't think I get what you're looking at. I don't.
Okay, all right, we'll, all right, we'll get together. Here's what I'm wanting to do. And this comes back, my one concern on the LDI side is that if, I don't know what we've got to wrap up here tonight, but if some funding can be found to piece something together to move forward on adding this position, this full-time position, even if it's several months late coming or whatever. The, just like the health insurance on LDI, LDI is great, but it's, my priority is our own departments before we start stepping outside of our own departments. And if, if we're struggling finding what we need to operate safely within our own departments, then I don't feel comfortable spending that money outside of our departments. So anyway, I guess I'm, I'm fine on the Parks and Rec and the Public Works. And we get that incentive program started. The other stuff, I'd like for us to script and scrape if we could and find something to come together. Do we have to finalize this tonight, Steve?
Well, the short answer is no. The long answer, the, the longer answer is that in order for us to have the public hearing at your June meeting on the budget, we have to advertise the budget with the additional revenues that council approved with the tax rates with an offsetting expense. That said, it is your budget. If we include the remainder of this 147,000 of new tax-generated revenue as unallocated, just, what was the board again?
Reserves.
Reserves. That allows coun, council at any time during FY 22, 23 to say that 26, $36,000 in reserve, we would like to spend on, on this. That gives you the flexibility. But the, the, the longer answer is, the better that we can identify where the funding is going in the FY 23 budget that we put out as part of the public hearing advertisement, that gives the general public that much more information about where their tax dollars are being spent. So the short answer is, no, you don't, this isn't the final decision and.
You're going to advertise the last two weeks in May.
Yes, sir, so it's coming up, yes, sir.
We could, in theory, look at it a little again at the next meeting.
Well, again, if we identify it as a reserve, it, it is, whenever we go into that, that, the next fiscal year, y'all can say, this was a reserve, we want to spend it here. And, and if the $36,000 would allow for a, a mid-year new, new officer position, that is something that council can consider at that time.
If I'm not speaking out of turn, I'll make one suggestion. If, if we are indeed looking at a base salary of 42,000 for your base salary, if we were to look at that reserve of 20, about 26,000, and maybe trim, can we trim that back to 20?
There's more people in Public Works than.
That's true, okay. So if we take just the 26, all in at the 42 with benefits, we're a little under 60, assuming single-rate insurance. We could, in addition, look at, I see what you're saying on the travel and training, because historically, it has come in under budget. I do see what you're saying on that line item.
Right, considerable.
If we would take that, about 5,000 from that line item, add it to the 26, we could fund your new person starting January 1. Not July 1, but January 1. We could get a half, heavier.
Yes, that, that, that's where.
It's what you actually spend and what you.
You don't get that?
Yeah, you should.
Well, I know, but I get, I don't, I don't get that. We keep our budget, what we spend, I never have gotten what the actual expenditure is, other than I stay over. I don't know if Mary put it somewhere or what.
Well, that'd be fantastic for you to.
We'll meet. I've got all your stuff right here. We'll meet.
I can discuss what you're talking about. I know that if I go over the red in another number, me and Mike, we keep our own budget. With them, they may take it off a different line item. We don't know where we're at, so what you're looking at, I don't know.
We only have one set of books. Don't let the chief. Give you the idea that he's got a separate set of books.
Trying to find that money to do it. And, and where I'm going, Bo, I guess is, would some things maybe be a bit of a sacrifice? Or do a little bit, do without a little bit on a couple of line items?
My real numbers then, apparently, I know that I had 5,000.
To make the real difference of whether you had that full-time position or not.
Yeah.
Well, you, you can come to our public meetings, you know, and you can listen to our actual budget numbers if you want. So.
I'm trying, Jerry.
We can look at a half.
So with those incentive programs, how was, how were the numbers derived, the 25 and 20? Was it somewhat arbitrary or?
No, no, I think what we did was, we looked at what we would, again, establishing a, a classification of a worker one, worker two, worker three, the anticipated additional salary that would go for each of those positions, and then the number of employees that we have. And again, it's not a, it, it, the, the incentive program is not a one-time benefit. It would be that, you know, you could work towards the, the two, you, then you could work towards the three. So if you've been here a while and you have all of the, the criteria, you could simply go from one to three and that would take you that, that full salary increment.
I would personally like to see us keep that unallocated and see what that program looks like. Quite honestly, I, I think it's a great idea. I do, but I mean, we're just putting.
We do, we want to come back to y'all.
We're just putting 45K out potentially, and we don't know what it is. I'd like to see what it is. I think it's a good idea, of course.
I think Jennifer's already presented council with her plan as far as identifying her employees.
And I, I know she talked about some of how that, very broad terms, but.
But we, we, we can definitely come back to y'all once the, the new budget year begins to detail that.
Let's still keep it in place on the.
Yeah, I think we need to keep it in the budget.
I mean, I think that's fair. I, I, I agree with you and Joey.
Look at the program before we.
Right, kind of a contingency.
Well, we still have it in the budget. We have the amounts, set aside. We have amounts set aside.
So if the, if you're not doing LDI, you're looking at a total of about 112,000. Am I looking at that right?
36, yes, about that, yes, sir.
About 36 left, yeah.
So you've got 36 left?
Yes, sir.
I, I really feel strongly about the LDI. I mean, even, I think the, the estimate was seven. And I understand what you're saying, Jason, about it not being in our, our, you know, in, in-house, so to speak. But that is our economic development. I mean, she's doing, what is, what are the events that she's doing? If that program, we, we don't, if we cannot retain a position in that program, we lose our Main Street designation. Is that correct? And that, and that position requires fundraising and.
And it opens up, opens up a number of grant opportunities. We wouldn't be looking at the.
She just received a new program.
For the, the working at home.
That has been a full-time position with benefits in the past.
Oh, it has. Not since I've been involved, it has not been.
A while ago. I mean, a while ago.
It just became the part-time position it is now.
It was a full-time position for, for many years.
Well, because the program was, was the fellow that worked for the paper, Jeff.
Catherine?
Jeff and Liz.
Yeah, and Liz Lewis, yeah.
Catherine was full-time, Liz was full-time with benefits, so it's.
Liz was full?
I think she was for.
I think Catherine was the last full-time, maybe.
Catherine was the last full-time, maybe so.
At any rate, I, I, I feel like, even if we could just, five or seven, I, I feel like there needs to be some investment.
I agree.
I support that.
I, I, I see what you're saying, Steve. It is, and what it boils down to with me is that this lone guy that's out there from 3:00 to 6:00 a.m., and maybe there's a county unit close, or maybe the closest county unit's in Shenandoah, that's a, that's a bad place to be.
Yeah, well, to be, to be clear, not to cut you off, but I'm not choosing between, I'm not choosing between our, our police and, and the needs there in our LDI. I'm not, I want to be very clear that I'm not trying to imply.
That's the job here, though, is the problem. That's where, at some point, that's kind of the job.
It is, and I mean, that's the balance I have.
It's not so easy to reduce expenditures, is it?
It's not.
Can I make a motion to.
I can, I'll make a motion to reduce during our taxes.
It'd go back to the taxes. It may be that easy to reduce spending too, if we look at stuff in the national numbers. I'll say that, but I'd like to find.
It's tough stuff. It's tough work.
Yeah, it's tough work. Like, if you want it, you can find it.
All right, so if we leave LDI, you're talking 26,000.
Could we cut the Parks and, the, the maintenance worker incentive? Could we make both of them just an equal 20?
Well, again, there's more maintenance worker staff in, in Public Works.
Okay.
So, I mean, if, if you wanted to drop to 23 and 18, if, if you're looking for.
I mean, my suggestion was just to keep it unallocated and understand the program before we allocate it. Well, we keep that much set aside first. That's all I was saying. Like, we still, and so we can actually hear what they have to say. And then we could just plug it in, plug and play once they have the program.
As they present it.
Because it's no use to honestly budget for it or something before there's a program for it, for me.
Well, you're going to have to budget for it if you want to implement it.
Yeah, we have to.
Well, I mean, budgets.
It's your market, but not.
Yeah, specifically allocate it on a line item, budget item. Because you can still allocate it later, correct? I mean, I guess all of us sort of like that, but yeah, of course, you could allocate later.
I'd put it aside now. You just, you, you not allocate it, I mean, not designate it for the program? You just want to put it in, so you just want to fund reserves?
Yeah, I was saying fund reserves and just keep it, but with the plan that we are going to spend it, that's what I was suggesting.
I, I think they'll come back to something. I think they're going to come back with something that will work.
Sure.
It's a bonus program. It's a bonus program. We, we should be able to figure it out.
I'd rather, I'd rather put it in except for what we intend it to be used for. And if they don't bring something back that works, then you don't spend it.
Right, right.
I, I don't like funding to reserves.
I know, that's, that's, that's true. But, but if it's not based on something.
Well, then we don't.
It is based on something.
But if they don't bring something back satisfactory, then you don't spend it.
Just don't spend it. That's fine. That's fine. I just want to make sure we see it. If we can see it, we'll, we'll prove it, sure. That's fine.
So we've got $26,000 that we can build that on somehow to get this police position into the budget?
Well, what I would suggest, rather than identifying funding for an individual park and rec or, or public work, would be to just identify a total $40,000 for park and rec and public work incentives, 10,000 for LDI. That, then that additional five would give you up to the $31,000, $32,000 for that position coming in at January 1. So if, if we, if we simply, council identifies $40,000 for a public works, park and rec incentive program to be for staff to detail at a later time, we would have that budget to work within. 10,000 for LDI and then 31,000 for the additional police. Ten thousand for LDI, and then thirty-one thousand for the additional police department position to come in, beginning January one. I think then that would fully allocate the additional revenues that, that you identified tonight.
Has LDI given a, any type of written-
They did.
Quantitative thing?
They, they did, I just don't have it with me, I apologize. They sent in a formal letter requesting the, the ten thousand.
Because, I mean, especially if the, if it's, the rationale is for insurance, and insurance is lower than that.
Well, it wasn't just for insurance.
Didn't we have something in our last packet?
It was.
I thought, yeah, there was something in our last packet that spoke to it.
I got a letter from-
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it, it was provided with-
It was, oh.
And, and again, I'm speaking, I understand that I serve on that board now, right, as a representative, so hence why I'm a little bit plugged in here. But it was in there, they had spoke with me about it, and yes, so that they had, right, the documentation.
See, I think it sounds like a great plan.
Yep.
Well, if y'all would simply make a motion.
I'll be at the bottom of it.
Again, it's forty thousand dollars for an incentive program for public works and, and parks and rec, ten thousand dollars towards LDI, thirty-one thousand-
Thirty-one for, yeah. I have a motion, Mayor, if you'd like.
I would love one.
I move to allocate forty thousand for public works and park and recreation, maintenance worker incentive program, ten thousand for Lurie Downtown Initiative, and thirty-one thousand for the Lurie Police Department.
I'll second that.
Second, all right, any discussion? Hey, Dad, you owe your coffee roll, please. Maybe for the last time.
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
All right. Steve, you're still up, I guess.
Well, yes, sir, this was intended, if there's any additional questions or, or thoughts that council had on your general fund, we wanted to offer that to you. If, if we've talked this through, and you would rather have a, a discussion at a future time, we can definitely facilitate that, too. It's just, the budget is in your hands, we are planning for that June thirteenth public hearing, so between then and now, we, we simply wanted to offer council the opportunity, if you have any questions, you know, by all means, you can ask in a meeting, but if you have any questions outside of the meeting, please let Danielle or I know, and we can definitely find information for you.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts on that? When we look at the next meeting, I think, okay. All right, Steve, item D, skateboard regulations.
Well, yeah, Councilman Sowers had requested a discussion of the item related to skateboard regulation fifty-eight thirteen, which prohibits skateboards on, in public areas adjoining Main Street, Broad Street, Campbell Street, or Virginia Avenue, as well as the Greenway. There had been some concern about allowing the skateboards on the Greenway. In review of our current code, staff would recommend an amendment to section ninety-eight forty-six that would require helmets by everyone using our skate park at Dean Park. If council does consider any use of the Greenway for skateboards, again, that anyone under fourteen would be required to wear a helmet on the Greenway.
Fourteen and younger, is it, that is the case, right? It's fourteen?
Correct, it, under fifteen.
Okay, cool, yeah.
So we would still be in conflict, I mean, we would have to amend the ordinance?
In, in order for, for fif, to, to include the Greenway helmet requirement, you would have to amend fifty-eight thirteen, yes, sir.
So I, first of all, I, I think that's gonna be an enforcement nightmare for the police to determine who's fourteen and under, and they should be wearing a helmet, and because these kids aren't required to carry IDs. I think that, that's gonna be a difficult requirement to enforce. Overall, I guess, I'm not so sure allowing the skateboards on the Greenway is a good idea. I always looked at the Greenway as more of a linear passive type park. We have a lot of elderly people that use the Greenway, we have a lot of people that walk dogs on the Greenway. Skateboards are, not, I'm saying they're reckless, but it's just the nature of a skateboard, it's just not as controllable as a, as a bicycle, for example. And I just, I, I just think that, I'm not so sure that allowing the skateboards on the Greenway is a good idea.
You, you brought up some interesting ones, including dogs. They're not pedestrian people, and they're not controllable, that all that must either.
But if the skateboard gets tangled in the leash, and, and-
Well, but then that sounds like a dog problem, right?
Well, so you, I, you want to, you want to bring up eliminating dogs on the skate-
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be argumentative, so, I'm, I'm the one that brought up, so let me just say, two main points I want, I wanted to bring up for council's consideration. The first one is, is the scenario where, I'm a father, my kids don't skateboard, so I don't have a dog in the fight, no pun intended, but, but say I want to take Bryce, and he all of a sudden wants to get a skateboard, I get him one, and I want to get him onto the Greenway. As it stands right now, I would be like, well, I know I'm technically breaking town ordinance to do this, but, you know, I think, I think the cops go easy on me. So I'll take him down there and skate. So to me, that's a totally innocuous thing, it's a, it's a very fitting place for a parent, take their child, go skateboarding, or even if their kid's a little older, and they're starting to build some confidence, and the parents there watching, and their kid's going back and forth, kind of figuring out a skateboard. I, I don't, the more that we can move off of having issues go to officer discretion, to me, seems preferable, if we have a, a clear ordinance that makes it to where they don't have to use their personal discretion on whether or not they're gonna be like, well, excuse me, ma'am, you shouldn't have your kid doing that, or just to leave it alone. So my first suggestion, first thing I'd like to, for you all to consider, is a minor is permitted on the Greenway path, and path excluding Ruffner Plaza and the like, on the actual Greenway, provided they are accompanied by a legal guardian. And the rationale for a guardian is it can't just be someone that's eighteen or older, such as some random adult, and they're seventeen, or they're fifteen or fourteen, with some random adult, they need to be accompanied by a parent. And, you know, as a, as a young parent myself, I would rather police my kids than have the police police my kids, you know? So take them out there, let them learn how to do things, like, hey, cut it out, don't be doing dumb stuff, don't chase after the dogs with your skateboard. That's my first premise, I don't know what you all think about that. I'll let that one kind of ruminate before I go into the second one.
So you're saying, if you have a seventeen-year-old child, that, that seventeen-year-old child would have to be accompanied by a parent to use a skateboard on the Greenway?
Yes, but it's accompanied by a second part, that would alleviate that obvious issue. So I'll, I'll go ahead and mention it then, so I'd like for us to consider designating a specific area of the Greenway for use of skateboards by both minors and adults. And there's been a few different ideas for that, I've, I've, you know, I've talked to some of our, I've talked to our chief about this, he's, you know, he's, he gave some, some wise advice on it, I told him I was gonna bring it up still. But there's both the circle loop, whatever you want to call it, and then there's the other end of the Greenway that have been kind of ideas. The advantage of the loop is that there's really good line of sight, like, and you would hear someone coming, and you would have plenty of time to get out of the way. That probably has the best line of sight and best opportunity to avoid any issues. On the other hand, we're talking about extending the Greenway out that way, and that presents its own set of problems. But if we go to the other end, Oscar Sowers, that's a much more narrow, and speaking to, to Jason, he brought up some good points, as far as tree coverage from the road, it's not very visible. And that is an issue, and that's gonna be an issue for, for Mr. Cook back there, you know, so it's, you can't really see what's going on. But I'd like for us to consider having a designated area of the Greenway that is open to everyone, but then more generally open for minors accompanied by a legal guardian. So that's wrong, that's wrong.
I'd like to say that, the idea of having the loop as a place to skateboard makes a lot more sense than anywhere else. I think skateboarders get a bad rap. I think we need to give them benefit of the doubt. I also believe that there's less things to vandalize on the loop than there is other parts of the Greenway. It's, it's a clear area, instead of some of the other parts to explain to the public where you can go, where you can't go. I don't think it will make all the skateboarders happy, because it won't have the jumps and the thrill-type things, but at least have a place that we can recognize what the public has said they wanted. They definitely want it.
Let me, let me clarify also, if skateboarders, I think if we, if, if council is open to something like this, that it's tailored for, there's no grinding, this is specifically for cruising on the Greenway on your skateboard, you know, because there is a place to go grind, yeah, maybe it's small, you know? We have our place here in town where you can go kick, do your kickflips and jump up on stuff at Ralph Dean, and then if they really want to go to a bigger one, there's one just down the road in Stanley, if they want to do more of the tricks. This isn't for tricks, if we're jumping off stuff and tearing up our facilities, it's for just cruising. And I've, I actually heard numerous people mention that, well, I just want a place to just cruise on the Greenway. I enjoy the Greenway, I like to skateboard, I'm not looking to be crazy, I just want to be able to go down it and get some exercise, so.
I think we could also consider changing the ordinance, so there had to be a, like a temporary time period, a testing period or something, where we change the ordinance so that they can skateboard in that section of the Greenway for the next three months, then revisit it.
I think we would do that by default, if it blew up in our faces, I guess.
But you could say that.
I would like to think that it wouldn't, you know? I'd like to think that the skateboarding community can be responsible with it.
Then people would know, you're, you are gonna revisit it, so you're expecting behavior. If you don't get it, then it's easier to take it away. But it's, it's about time to let skateboards on that Greenway, at least somewhere. Keep them off the sidewalks, get them off the street, give them a legal place they can ride it, because they're not supposed to be on the school grounds after hours.
Right now, legally, they can ride a skateboard in their neighborhood, as long as it's not one of the four major streets.
They can ride it anywhere in town, except for those streets mentioned.
Well, and the streets adjoining it, yeah, but it's a lot of town, right? It's most neighborhoods-
Most neighborhoods in town, they can legally ride a skateboard. And, but, I mean, the only, the only areas in town that they can't are the, are the ones that are identified here in the, in the code. And those streets that are adjacent to the main thoroughfares here in town, which it does make sense that you would want to restrict skateboards on, on those types of streets. But when they can, when they can ride the skateboards in their own private neighborhoods, why put them on the Greenway?
One side, means they can do that, is that on the street in the neighborhood, on the sidewalk?
On the street.
On the street or the sidewalk.
Yeah, it just says adjoining Main Street, Broad Street, Campbell Street, or Virginia Avenue within the town, right? So, so, so as long as it's not adjoining any of those four streets, so in the Boone Field, they can ride-
Anywhere they want to.
Yeah, to their hearts' content, just-
I have one thing real quick, too, and you and Mrs. Sowers talked about it for a good bit. My biggest concern is open to Greenway, and I'm, you know, wherever you guys pass, we're gonna, we're gonna force her, not force, but, is getting to the Greenway. And I know, talk, know the jurisdictions, you know, that have the skate parks or designated areas, we're gonna have kids riding the street, and they're gonna say, well, I'm going to the loop, which will catch them on mechanic street, or they're on the Greenway saying, I'm going to the loop. They're still on the Greenway. I doubt very seriously you're gonna have many drive up, get out, and walk. And it is gonna be a nightmare enforcing, just going to the loop, if we open the loop up, or part of the Greenway. So they're gonna skateboard to get there, I guarantee it. That's, that's where-
That's the point.
And my comments aren't in the, in the context that I think skateboarders are irresponsible or reckless. My, my comments are just the nature of the activity itself. The nature of riding a skateboard is, unless you're very proficient at it, and some are and some aren't, is, is, it's, it's not as controllable. And when you, when it's mixed into predominantly a pedestrian area, that's more pedestrian use than anything else, and then the, and the, and the dogs as well, I, I think that it's just asking for, for trouble. And also, the, as the chief said, it's gonna be very difficult to enforce these details when the majority, ninety percent of the town, they can, they can ride their skateboards.
People can walk a hundred percent of the town.
They could.
And they can take, walk their dogs a hundred percent of the town.
But, but, when this Green, when the Greenway was established, the Greenway was established as, again, I think that's the exact verbiage, a linear passive park. And it was established for pedestrian use.
And bicycling, was it specific bicycling initially?
I don't even know that originally bicycles-
I know that their website says it now, but I wonder if it-
Originally, I don't think bicycles were even-
Oh, really?
Be a part of. It was supposed to be a walking trail or parkway. And when the bicycles sometimes are in conflict as well, and, and the dogs, but, but-
Yeah, but bicycles can vary.
But the skateboard's gonna add entirely different element to it.
I guess I'd like to hear what the Greenway Foundation thinks.
We can ask them.
Yeah, sure. I, I think you're right, Jerry, that I believe it was designed as a walking path. Gentlemen, I talked with another town council member, who was recently sitting in the chair I'm sitting in, and his response was, it's built as a walking trail, walking path. And I think, I told Joey this a little earlier, if we look at what we're trying to do, or some of the suggestions, as far as taking a portion of the Greenway, and saying, okay, this activity's allowed here regardless of what it is, whether it's skateboards or, or anything else. If we're saying you're restricted to this area, we've about answered our own question. It's really not a fit for the Greenway, or else that activity could be done on the whole Greenway. Why are we choking it down to a portion? We're choking it down to a portion because it has some type of effect to the other users of the Greenway that we don't want to open that wide open to the entire Greenway. So whether it be, someone wants to make it golf cart friendly, and drive their golf carts on the driveway, or someone wants to make it a horse riding trail, yeah, what is it? It's, it has its intended use, and I believe its intended use is the pedestrian walking trail use. And as we mix, and like I say, I don't know where bicycles fall in, I've seen some stuff as far as some close calls with people traveling way too fast, this is adults, this isn't kids, too fast on a bicycle, has no business being on the Greenway, weaving around people walking. That person or people should be on the street. If they want to travel fast, get on the street, and bikes permitted on the street. So, like I say, once again, this is nothing against skateboards, it's just trying to mix different things with what the, against the intended use of what that was designed for. I think there's where the challenge is coming. And the elderly, that you mentioned. I see it all the time, it takes me two days to, I sit for two days straight, I'm looking at people on the Greenway every week, and it is a higher percentage of elderly people. Some with, can't even walkers, get out and walk that Greenway with a walker. And the ability to move, the ability to get out of the way, the ability to hear something coming, that's coming fast behind you, or whatever, that's, that's an issue.
Maybe we should develop a skate park.
I'm sure.
Don't we have a skate park?
We've got one.
I, I was actually here when we, when they made the original ordinance in two thousand and six. And I remember. Remember Mayor Dean? One poor little skater showed up, he walked from Stanley. And, you know, they did have some problems, I remember seeing, you know, some people out there on the skateboard, and, and on the Greenway, and, but I can remember, for some reason, I remember that hearing like it was yesterday. But, yeah, I mean, I, I agree, it probably isn't the best fit for the Greenway. But I definitely don't have any problem with people skateboarding in town. I guess I could probably be convinced that maybe on the Greenway to, but I think, I think I don't know. So, we keep talking about it, and if any, any, any skaters want to come and petition and plead their case, I'd be more and more willing to listen.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not looking for action tonight, you know, I wanted to have this discussion. I want to see where the council is coming down, because you all have been talking, because you've been talking, or potentially talking to people during this last little bit, or maybe that was the last you heard of it, it was a blip on the face porking, that's all she wrote.
Then the roundabout came about, nobody forgot about it.
We got skateboards at the roundabout, they're going around in circles.
Put a statue of a skateboard right in the middle.
The mayor on the horse, right in the middle of that.
Right, the mayor, the mayor on the horse, huh?
That's planned, isn't it, Brian? For the roundabout, that statue we talked about?
It's about this tall. I don't want us to drop it either, I, I think we should, I think we should give it a fair, a fair discussion, I think. I appreciate your input tonight. Especially, to me, the idea of, of a kid with a parent, to me, seems like-
I, I agree with you on that, Joey, it's, and I see little kids on skateboards, little kids on these little razor scooter things, it's basically a-
kids on these little razor scooter things, it's basically a skateboard with a little handle on it, kids on bicycles with training wheels, and...
Sure.
And I guess the difference there with a child, and I think that, child different than a dog, I'm speaking of those like ten and under. They're not aggressive in what they're doing. You know what I'm saying? They're, they're just barely trying to balance this bike. They're inching along on this little scooter. So, they're really not a threat to the walker, like someone who is skilled and has that speed to zoom past somebody that's a...
Yeah, or has the speed, not the skill.
But even just to, just to startle somebody older that could cause them to take a fall or something like that happen, I'd hate to see that.
Yeah, and the kids, I mean, the kids on, and with the kid, with the parents, you know, those, those kids, and then you talk the sixteen-year-old, which is gonna be the, where the likely problems are gonna be.
Sure.
If, if, if we're saying that a, a, a child or young person that age has to have a parent with them, I just don't think it's gonna be feasible.
Well, and that's why I was saying a designated area where everyone can ride. Not that I expect five-year-olds to be out there by themselves on the Greenway, but, you know, but, yeah, if you're a teenager, you don't want your parent there. Have an area like the loop where it's, it's open for them to ride.
I think it just, yeah, again, just be mindful that the more allowances that we employ, that then means the more policing that has to be done. And I, I appreciate what Jason said, is, you know, speaking to the intent of the Greenway. I think there is slippery, because I agree, you know, when my girls are young and taking them out, that would, that was an ideal place to take them for skating or riding their bicycles and teaching them. But it's a whole different ballgame when you get thirteen, fourteen, you know, teenagers out there, again, with that skill set, and thinking about, again, when I'm there and seeing the elderly and their response time or ability to react. Again, we just need to act in fairness of all of our residents and population that use that.
Sure.
And there, there is dedicated space that the skateboarders can, can go to and, you know, be as crazy as they want without, right, my grandma's not gonna go to the skate park. I can assure you that, because that was designated for the skaters. And so, you know, in fairness, we, we have designed, and yes, be it, it is small, but also that there are other parts of town. I think that we could have probably controlled the narrative a little bit better and, and just when we announced the friendly reminder, the season's upon us, please be mindful of our ordinance, that might have prevented some of what occurred on Facebook. I think it was embellished. I think people panicked. It's like, why are you doing this? You're trying to control and, and suppress our youth, and that's not at all what we're trying to do. And so, I think this is a lesson learned here, hopefully, and that when we, you know, put notices out to the public about trying to, again, control that and make sure that we are getting the message across that, again, we're not here to prohibit, but it is that we do need to be mindful of the safety and, you know, fairness of all, of all our users in the town, yeah.
I'm curious, what did you all do with rollerblading back when that was a thing? Or was that too, that was too early of a fad?
Yeah.
Streets.
No, I mean, like for Greenway, Greenway, I guess it was never an issue on the Greenway either. I was just curious.
I think I've seen people.
Been a long time. That was huge.
Very, very few, but I've seen people out there. Okay, George, okay, we table that till the next work session, the next meeting or whatever? All right, thank you. Till we table it till work session or the regular meeting. What do you all want to do?
In Woodstock, reckless skateboarding is prohibited.
Reckless?
Define reckless.
Reckless use of roller skates, skateboarding, toys, load devices, and wheels runners prohibited. So, you know, that might be getting, anyway, I'm sorry.
Enforcing reckless? This is like reckless driving, so reckless skating.
We decided, good time to make it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I think that's, that's the whole agenda. A couple announcements. The next joint county-town meeting is May fifth. I cannot attend. Jerry, would you like to represent?
When is it, May fifth?
May fifth.
Thursday, next Thursday.
This coming Thursday?
No, next, it's next Thursday. It's to be the twenty-eighth.
Oh, no, yeah, right, right. Twenty, uh, yeah, yeah, I'll do.
Do you have a councilman who wants to go along?
Not everybody. I can't, I can't take all of them.
You'll go. You went very nice, son. It was wonderful. It's a great, great fun.
If I'm in town, I'll go.
Well, Jason's already committed to this one, but we're, right?
Okay. Hall Mill Rec, three P M. on the fifth.
Is it back to the afternoon, the three o'clock?
Oh, three P M., you're lucky. We got the dinner hour.
Still seated, Jason?
Yeah.
You okay with that, Jason?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll let you all, I'll let you all.
I'll be in touch with you.
Yeah, well, yeah.
We'll work together on that. Of course, Imagination Station, the grand opening is May seventh, and you see as many of you there as possible. That's...
Nine A M., right?
No, it is nine, right, Steve?
Yes, sir. But we, we specifically moved it a little earlier, because if we said ten o'clock, there'd be people there nine, so we tried to facilitate opening it up as early as possible.
It's good.
All right, anybody else, anything? A councilman, any comments?
I appreciate Councilman Sowers bringing up about the tax rate and us going back and going through that. I do appreciate your, um, doing that, and also for the skateboard regulations, so.
Thank you all for working on that, again. We'll be a little unorthodox and switch it around there.
Anybody else?